What is up fam, welcome to Roar's channel where today we have something just a little bit special and we have already a mix up here. Is that you in the background there corrupt? Anyway, so guys today we're gonna be doing something a little different. We're gonna be talking about Clash of Clans as we watch. Hey corrupt. I can, I can hear your uh. Alright, so corrupt, can you hear me?
Yes, I can also hear the video.
Yeah, will you shut that off? Anyway guys, so what we're gonna be doing today is we're gonna be talking Clash of Clans and ultimately good, give me it back to you guys. You guys can chat with us. And really just um, if you have any questions to let us know. I mean, really we came today um, to, to bring this to you guys. And ultimately push it back and hopefully we can get some good conversations going here. Anyways guys, welcome corrupt. How are you doing today?
I'm doing good. So this, this is definitely uh, something I wanted to do for a while with someone, but uh, yeah.
Definitely, definitely.
Also, I see so- someone's comment saying the dr- the dr- uh, baby dragon's tongue is blue. Um, and the reason that that one is blue, I guess is, well, or I guess why is he noticing this? This, that, that image was from uh, the Clash Royale one. I found on.
So you.
I'm like, I'm gonna use it.
Yeah, well, I mean, we pull these images especially on the internet. We'll search out the uh, uh, you know, a PNG file. Once we find it, we grab it. Doesn't matter. Where it comes from, as long as it fits our uh, our, our theme here. Yeah, that's what we're doing. So I'm in the background guys, you guys are gonna be watching some of Hellhorror's wars and we're just gonna show some replays. Hopefully I don't burn too many bases, but again, it's not gonna be for my clan, so I don't really care. Um, so guys, I, I really wanted to chat. What do you guys think about the new meta? What do you think about the new meta troops and, and just how the game is going? I, I, I would love to get a conversation there as I feel like it's going really well. What do you think corrupt?
I think, I guess from, from my sort of standpoint on the, on the meta, so it's just that, it's kind of, well, it's hard to say. You're not seeing too many tunnel 12, three stars. Then again, yeah, you got Pekka Boba, but um, then you also have other strategies um, at 11 and 10 that are definitely working. Like 10 is really diverse. So I'm really happy about that.
Definitely, definitely. I mean, in my opinion, uh, and this is just me, and I noticed that a lot of League players are noticing this as well. Um, that tunnel 10 is kind of becoming the old tunnel 9 and I know that's already being talked about, but I think the biggest thing about it is, is, is it really a worthy town hall to put into League these days? I guess that would be my, my question. No, tunnel 10.
I don't know, cuz tunnel 10s can still defend. Um, but.
I think the, I think we gotta, I think we gotta pull up stats here on this one, like um, like hit rates and percentages. Is it actually performing when it comes to defending? I mean, if the hit rate is above a certain percentage, do we even think it should be in, in, in League?
People are gonna hear my keyboard because I have to.
No. No.
But anyways, uh, as far, like if I go to CDO invite and I take a look at their stats, I mean, 10v10s. It's you, it's above 50% that you're gonna get a triple or a cleanup. Um, that's usually what's gonna happen.
Are these, are these percentages somewhere you can actually find them? Cuz you, I've actually tried to look that up, like can we find these percentages?
If you look on War Match, you can.
Okay, so they actually have them.
You can find those league wide stats and yeah, in the entire CDO, CWL invite, um, it's 50% for uh, 10v10, so.
Gotcha, gotcha. That's pretty.
It's kind of like where Town Hall 9 was, so it's, it's at a good place right now. You can still fail on it, but it's um.
Right, right, right. Yeah, man, I, I'm telling you, I am uh, I'm, I am loving League though, so I'm playing right now in CWL Elite. And I'm not sure if you're, you're familiar with what that is corrupt, but um, it is the all Town Hall 12 uh.
Yeah, I know, I know about it. I'm in the CWL server.
Okay, I wasn't sure if you were, yeah, man, and it's, it's fun, it's.
Well, I mean, it, I think this kind of goes to show how, how like small the tunnel 12, 3 star rate is.
Right.
It's basically where Town Hall 11 was before Town Hall 12.
Definitely, definitely.
So. Yeah, it has, it has a really high percentage 2 star rate, but uh, 3 star rates, it's pretty low, but that's where it should be.
Definitely. Well, I mean, uh, you're, you're right and I would say you're wrong too. I mean, I, I feel like, I feel like it's actually not even that hard, to be honest, like. Um, especially now with these new meta troops, like I, I feel like the percentages are, are, they, I feel like they're, they've definitely went up. And what I like about it is the diversity of attacks you can um, utilize now. Now you'll see not only um, air, which we were seeing there for just about strictly six months, but you're also seeing some, some banging ground attacks as well.
Yeah, I mean, the stone summer opened up a lot of new things when it came out. I was really scared that it was going to completely destroy the meta entirely, which I was right, but.
Uh, I mean, I, I don't think, I don't think destroy is the right word.
We'll drag back.
Okay, yeah, maybe drag back destroyed the meta. You're probably not wrong there, but to say the slammer did, I think it's opened up um, the realm for a multitude of, of attack strategy. Uh, yes, has it changed the game? I'd say that's definitely the case.
Yeah, I think, yeah, those two were especially, but I feel like kind of in the meta, I mean, I don't think it needs a nerf. I think it's perfect where it is. People build their bases.
Oh, okay.
And so far, you, I haven't seen many people try to actually defend it. So it's, it's something that I think people've gotta understand the pattern of it, when, cuz it's, you should treat it like a loon.
The slammer, yeah.
Yeah, just treat it like a loon and then go from there.
Like a gigantic loon with a ton of, of defensive.
It's basically a wall, it, it's basically a wall wrecker if it was a loon.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you and I'll tell you man, what's even, what's even just as exciting about the slammer is, is uh, how, how you like these new levels, like the witches and the hogs, man, and. And uh, seeing how, how the ice golem holds up now. I, you know, I really like it and it's like I said before, I'm personally really happy with the current meta. But these new troops, I, you know what, something I haven't seen a lot of though, is those hogs. And I know they're happening. I just haven't been around a clan that's using them yet.
Hogs, now, I haven't seen too many hogs, but when I do, it's either kill squad or sui. And sui hog is extremely strong.
At Town Hall, at Town Hall, well, no, so, so I'm talking about Town Hall 12 even. I'm, I'm, you know what?
At Town Hall 12, I would say, right now, the, one of the best strategies to use at 12 is Pekka Boba.
Oh, yeah.
That thing is destroying bases. I would say, not easily, but it's definitely um, a really dominant attack. Compared to other attacks like drag back.
For sure.
Because I mean, X mortality had their war, 11v12, 2 star with that strategy and then 12v12.
Right.
Same, it was literally the exact same thing, the uh, with the bat wave and all of that. It was just. At, at Town Hall 12, depending on the base, you can definitely get further as a 12 than an 11, but it's still 11 and 12 are roughly the same.
Yeah, right, right, right. Um, it's right, and I, I, dude, for some reason, I can't perform at Town Hall 11 to save my life. And I, you know what I think it comes down to, is I think that at Town Hall 11, you have to pull off that triple for it to be a successful attack, right? At Town Hall 12, you could hit a, a 70% 2 star and be okay with it, you know, so. Oh man, Town Hall 11 is kicking my butt right now, but I, you know what's funny, man? You know who Minion is?
I think so.
Yeah, yeah, Minion, she's a fellow YouTuber. She's um, uh, she's just recently started, so she's um, you know, somewhat smaller, but if you guys don't know who that is, you guys should definitely check her out. Anyway, she made a comment yesterday, um, pretty, pretty funny and, and accurate. She said, um, she said, the bigger um, of, of a YouTuber you become, the, the, the crappier of attacker you, you also become. And she hit it on the, on the, on the nail, dude, cuz that's so me, like I'm telling you, as I've grown.
Carbon's the exception.
What did you say?
Carbon's the exception.
Yeah, carbon is the only exception out there, but I would say that, oh yeah, man, it's definitely been the case for me at least.
I mean, I, I mean, I'm just starting to get into war again, uh, but I'm probably just gonna use drag back. That's really the only strategy that's.
Yeah.
Like viable.
It really is. We have somebody, we have Storm in the chat saying hogs with miners. Yeah, hogs with miners for sure, like. I've not seen that, but I've, I've actually been hearing whispers of hogs with miners. Actually, I, what I did see, and I didn't, it wasn't a triple, but it was a 99% one star, or two star. It was a um, hog with bats on top of it and literally, it was crazy dude. Literally the bats and the hogs were moving at the same time, hitting this exact same defenses, but it was destroying. And there was only two heals to get it done with a really strong kill squad. It was interesting, it was interesting.
I would, let's see, other things I would say, um, Virus says, like, can you visit my base and give me some tips? I mean, I, I don't have any control over, but you do, cuz you, you're the one streaming it.
Can you visit my base and give me some tips? Alright, yeah, man. Um, so give me your base tag and, and corrupt and I will tear it down for you. Or tear it down or pick it up, whatever, what, whatever.
Yeah, whatever.
Whatever it is. We'll see. Uh, it's funny. Yes.
I would say.
So what do you think?
My, my farming base has been hit by a ton of electro dragons, either level ones or level twos. They never can seem to get a 3 star when I'm lower. Unless they're using the stone slammer, then my base kind of usually defends them. Electro dragons are really interesting, but um. I, I don't understand why I see him so, like every time I go to a Clan War League's uh, ESL streaming and I keep seeing that. It's like, why are you guys using that? You do realize it's a 2 star strategy?
Yeah, well dude.
Just use Pekka Boba. It's like, I've, like every time I've seen Pekka Boba 12, it's def- it's basically destroyed the bases every time. It's insanely strong.
Yeah, especially for those clans who know what they're doing, but you're probably seeing clans who have no idea what the heck they're doing, or they haven't been watching us YouTubers and putting out these videos. Cuz if you've not noticed, everybody's put out about 15 of these videos so far.
I mean, I think the, I think the, I think I got two of those, even though I didn't, I dec- no, I did upload it. I think.
Yeah.
When I decided to do that video, I believe it was from OnlyTheBrave, that I'm actually currently in right now.
Right.
On my mini tunnel 10.
Um, in, in chat, someone says, can you do the same for me? Yeah, guys, just hand me your uh, your, your, your base tags and I'll, I'll jump over there and check them out. Again, me and.
Yeah, it's, it's easy, but it's also easy to defend if uh, it's, it's just mass dragon. If someone, it, it's like mass dragon of the past.
Right, right, right.
Start with that. Yes, that's what Storm, Storm was saying.
Um, you say, well, you drag their stim.
I'd say, but then again, Pekkas exist, so just use Pekka Boba.
Yeah, but see, you know what the problem with a lot of people are, and I'm not, I'm not even gonna say it's not me.
It's not even, it's not even no skill. It's like, well, it's not even like a skill strategy. You just set a funnel, send everything in, pop the grand lord's ability, town hall goes off, boom.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you say that, but a lot of people struggle with knowing where to put the, the bats down and like, um, you know, and then they're scared that they're not gonna freeze something and then your entire. Attack has gone to crap, right? Like, I mean, yes, you're right, it is strong. It is something that every person um, participating in, needs to be doing those friendly challenges. That is the importance of friendly challenges. It's definitely giving you that ability to utilize those attacks, but it is scary, man. It's, it's not easy, it's not easy. It's not as easy as you're making it sound, I guess, for, at least for me, watching it take place. Maybe I just suck, dude. You know what? We need to get together and have more together sometime.
Yeah.
So master show, um, so we did, um, yesterday, just so you're in, in, in the loop, yesterday, uh, yesterday we streamed a um, Italian War League up against the EYG, which is um, where I do most of my YouTubing out of. And uh, dude, they, they really crushed us. It, it was pretty sad. It was an all 50v Town Hall 12, were really fun, but man, they came in with some bangers and they, they, they beat up on us pretty bad, but that's what Master, Master Show is talking about.
Have you seen any uh, have you seen any uh, 10, or I'm sorry, uh, 12v11 dip fails?
Uh, you said, you said, are we seeing Town Hall 12?
Well, have you seen any?
Oh dude, I'm, I'm the pro at them. I'm the pro at dip fails, bro. What do you mean? Yeah, of course. It's hard. No, mainly man, I, again, I don't practice enough, so if you're, if you're bringing up me, ask anybody in my clan, like dude, you suck.
Yeah, well, I mean, like, like for me, I'm doing a random spin, uh, that I might stream my live attacks tomorrow.
Nice, nice.
So that'll be fun.
Nice, nice.
Cuz I, I'm a town, I'm like the number four Town Hall 11s. Just gonna wait, just to, just, just wait for these drag back and I'll triple both time.
Whoa.
Do a 12v.
Okay, so if, if you don't triple, what are you gonna do for everybody?
I don't know.
You gotta like shave your head bald in front of everybody.
No, I don't wanna do that.
Okay, so I made a bet saying if I don't triple this, then I'll shave my beard. Well, it was actually pretty funny. I did not triple it and I plugged my razor in to do it and. Um, live on stream and it blew the circuit and my whole stream went dead. It was pretty funny.
Ooh, you're like, oh.
Well, I mean, it worked out my favorite, so I was able to keep my little goatee. Yeah.
You're like, you're safe for another day, goatee.
Right, poor thing, poor thing. Go back to work on Monday, so I have to shave it. Um, we have Master Show in the, in the house saying. Uh, okay, we got Master Show. Storm's saying it's strong and easy to pick up, but like Aaron says, some people struggling. That's why um, some people play leagues and some people.
Now, shameless plugin time. If you haven't gone, gone check, uh, to check out my Town Hall 10 Queen Charge Baby Dragon baby, cuz that's a good strategy.
Is that coming from in the chat?
That, that was actually uh, an attack that Red Rhino's did in the uh, in just a random spin war, but it was really good. I haven't seen it in a long time.
Dang.
So it's definitely something to check, check out.
Dang. Yeah, I mean, oh, that's a Town Hall 10 though. Um, most of the people we're talking to right now in the chat, I think, are Town Hall 12s.
Yes, Town Hall 12.
Oh, wow. That's a big, that's crazy, dude. I've not, not seen anything like that yet.
I don't even cover Town Hall 12 content.
You don't?
It's so hard for, I, it's so hard for me to get it and like this is the, the, the one I'm gonna be posting is the first one in a long time.
Why? You just, oh, is it because you're not at Town Hall 12?
Well, one, I'm not Town Hall 12 and two, um, our clan, um, family doesn't use that many 12s, cuz we're only in light. And um, but maybe I'll get more when I go to um, when I go over to, yeah, WHF Rising.
Yeah, man, cuz I mean, the end game right now is practically all Clash of Clans.
No, not Town Hall 12 Baby Dragon Storm. That would be impressive, but no.
Right? Oh, see, that's what I thought you were talking about too. I was like, dang, I haven't seen that at all, but now.
I said Town Hall 10. I literally said Town Hall 10.
Fair enough, fair enough, fair enough. Yeah, man, um, again, it, because I think uh, Town Hall 12 is like, is all Clash of Clans supercell really. I'm not gonna say cares about, cuz they care about it all, but they're focusing on because of ESL and all those uh, you know, esports. Um, I think that's right now the biggest focus for most people is Town Hall. That's why I'm surprised you haven't been putting any, any, any of that content out.
I guess it's just cuz, you know, I think about like what people are searching up, so I, there's a lot of people who search up Town Hall 10. There's not a lot of people who are Town Hall 12, so it's a very select few.
Yeah, true, true. Good point.
But I mean, then again, I should probably start doing more 11 and 12 content, just because as people start to go up, there's gonna be more of a demand in that when Town Hall 13 comes out.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
So I think that's something that I think I'm gonna start realizing.
So what do you predict?
None of my Town Hall 11 content does well.
Oh, really? Interesting. So, so what do you, when do you predict uh, Town Hall 13 will come out? I have my predictions, but I'll let you go first.
I would, let's see, I think witches can still, let's see, cuz what's, what's the um. What's the, the time for witches going to level 5?
I, they can already, they can already go to level 5, right?
Yeah, but.
I think it's nine, I think it's 14 days.
But like, how many days?
14 days.
Cuz you're saying 14 then, I'm not sure. Well, I think witches aren't gonna be, aren't gonna go up in level, let me see.
Well, what, my, my question is, yeah, so you don't think that Town Hall 13 is gonna be this year?
I don't think it's gonna be this year. I don't think they have any plans to do that this year, cuz all the uh, all the other troops that can be upgraded, uh, have a 14 day at their max level, so. From what I would say is, that's probably not gonna come out for a while. I would say maybe early next year.
Uh, well, you know, I've been, I've been kinda, ha- have you been following Galanon and Darian's uh, videos late, recent, recently, where they've been talking? He's done like three episodes together?
Not really.
No, dude, it's actually really awesome content and I'm actually um, gonna pull from it prob- most likely, but um. I think that um, based on their conversation, that we'll see it by the end of this year, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
Um, so we have a guy in the chat says, uh, Roar, can you please share a Town Hall 10 warbase for CDO? Not that creative and there are some good bases on YouTube, but they are popular. Um, I would love to share with, with you one man, but what I will say, if I share it right now, check it out. You have eight people watching it.
But Berserk, I wanna admit, I wanna specifically shout you out for something. I am gonna do Town Hall 10 warbase uh, speed builds, so that's something I'm thinking about doing.
Well, you have that. That's something you guys can, but I think you have CWL coming up, uh, Berserk? I'm assuming he's probably needing it like now.
I, I, is he talking about, is he talking, oh no, he's probably not, he's probably talking about that, yeah. Then again, I have chrono spaces, so we're, we're good, we good.
Majarian Army is in the house. MB saying, I have seen 15 Town Hall 12 Baby Dragons. You have seen 15 Town Hall 12. You're probably, MB, we're not talking about like.
He means 12, Town Hall 12, 15 Baby Dragons.
That's a lot, dude. I've no, I've never, I've never seen that at all. But she, but she's actually out of a clan that is uh, predominantly um, overran by Town Hall 12, so wouldn't surprise me at all. I think she runs out of, she runs out of Majarian Army, so it's really uh, doesn't surprise me. I, I, I just haven't seen it, man. I just, I, to me, I don't, I mean, Town Hall 10, it dies there. I, I haven't seen it at 11 or 12. But I mean, again, nobody's gonna be utilizing it now with, you know, dra- with Pekka Bat, Boba, so freaking strong.
Yeah.
Storm says, uh, I got a Town Hall 10 account, um, sounds good corrupt. He said he would like to see that for sure, so.
I'll totally make a, make a video on that.
Get it together, corrupt, get it together.
I need to start doing more base building videos, cuz I haven't, I've neglected that.
Yeah, well, and on top of that dude, I think, I think your top base building video um, happened to come, or your top video happened to come from a base building video. So that should, that, that should tell you right there.
I still don't understand, I still don't understand why that video did.
Dude, the algorithm, the algorithm is so confusing. I don't think we'll ever understand any of the, any of these at all.
Yeah.
And Berserk says, can I uh, PM you? You can PM one of us, yeah, absolutely Berserk. Definitely, hit us up. Um, I put, I, I put corrupt's channel in the description down below, so if you guys wanna check out corrupt, please do so. Jump over there and show the guy a little bit of love. Um, we just figured we'd get together and ultimately give you guys um, some commentary and if you guys have any questions whatsoever, feel free to ask them. Um, as we are, you know, here for you. So and, and again, if you guys want your base reviewed, don't be scared. Throw your base uh, tag in the, just in the uh, chat and we'll definitely check it out. So, alright, we'll just, we're just watching a, dude, if I play a dip, guys, don't judge me. Actually, I'm playing a dip right now, so Rupert Mike, we're not gonna play that. Dropping down. We won't show dips, especially if they're a dip fail. Majarian Army says, yes. Yo people with Town Hall 10 plus, I only have a save, 7 and a, and 2 9. Oh, Alexander says he only has uh, 7 and 2 9s. There's nothing wrong with that, man. Trust me, ask corrupt, we've all been there. We went through that, uh, that, that Town Hall level at one point.
Oh, yes. Yeah, I have a Town Hall 8 now.
You have a Town Hall 8?
Yeah, it's 7, I have one, the Town Hall 8.
You, 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 you enjoyed it?
Hmm?
You enjoying it?
Um, I mean, I just played that so I can get it to a decent level where I can start warring with that one as well. And then I'm gonna have, I made another account for Town Hall 5, Town Hall 5 tournament.
You're gonna do a Town Hall 5 tournament?
No, have you, have you not heard about the Town Hall 5 tournament?
No, dude, I haven't heard about it.
Yeah, the, the uh, like supercell was talking about, so like Town Hall 5 tour.
Are they being serious?
The winning team of Town Hall 5s will get $5,000 each.
Are you serious?
Yes.
What the heck dude? Where was this put out at?
On their Twitter from CWA. He was back in Clash of Clans.
Yeah, I saw that. Clash with Ash is back into Clash of Clans. I bet, that's pretty exciting, man. I mean, and you know, so I'm hanging out in EYG, right? That's my family. Um, predominantly, I spend most of my time in the EYG, is that's where my clan hangs out, hangs out, but um, you know, their, his old clan, Clash with Ash, is also a part of the EYG, you know that, right? And so we're all like waiting, like hopefully, we'll, we'll have him stop by again, who knows?
You guys are like, please come back.
Yeah, dude, I mean, the clan's called Clash with Ash. He has to come back.
You guys are waiting for this moment?
Dude, I'm not kidding. Um, let's see, we have Jackdoodle says Clash with Ash is joining it. Wait, you have to be messing with me, Jackdoodle. I haven't heard this one yet, but that would be really awesome. I mean, max Town Hall 5 for it. What? Okay, so guys, I guess my next few videos are gonna be me uh, working on my Town Hall 5. What the heck? If this is really a thing, corrupt, are you messing with me?
Yeah, this is a real thing.
What?
It was shared, it was shared in uh, in the. People have Town Hall 5s.
That's insane, dude. What? Okay, alright, it's time, it's time to make it happen. We have Jamie right now saying, I'm in Clash with Ash. Yeah, see? See, there we go. What's up soccer mom? Welcome to the stream, guys. Welcome everybody. Thank you all for tuning in. I was sitting here just like BS a little bit with a fellow YouTuber, have a little fun. And ultimately just talk about, you know, the ways of Clash of Clans. If you guys have any questions, like I said before, please do ask. So now we see, what do we see dude? On the screen, we see a bunch of e-drag. Of course we do. The e-dragon attack. That's crazy, man. So Town Hall 5, how long did it take you to max out your Town, max to Town Hall 5?
Like how long?
Yeah, how long did it, did it take you to get there?
It didn't take me that long. It's, it's not, it wouldn't take, I don't think it ta- it'll take anyone like a ton of time to get to like a Town Hall 5.
I'm thinking, is it like, like two days or is it like a week? You know what I mean? A month?
I would say it's, it's a couple of days, but I mean, yeah, it's really not that hard. I mean, I'm a Town Hall 8 and I've had that 7 account for. I think Tunnel 7 on that account for a little bit, I think for at least a few months. Wasn't really that hard to, to uh, do anything, right? So it PM'd me.
They PM'd you. Yeah, um.
Alright. Actually, do you know why I can just, I can go. I'm just not gonna show the base I'm using for, so where's the one that I shared with someone else? Alright, here we go.
You're sending him a base?
Yeah.
So we have Virus asking, what do you think about Pekka Bowlers and Bats? Which is something we kind of talked about a little bit, but I mean, uh, what do I think about it? Dude, it's insane, man.
Pekka Bowler Bats?
Yeah, Pekka Bowler Bats.
That strategy is strong. I have a video, uh, I'm gonna have a video with that coming out. that strategy is strong I have a video uh I'm gonna have a video with that coming out so
it's written
stay tuned for stay tuned for that virus I've got a Pekka bowbat video of extreme measures of eleven eleven almost a town eleven almost three stars a twelve I think it was a max twelve
like max in current meta max
not the walls but the walls don't mean anything
well I mean it takes the wall wrecker three hits instead of two hits
yeah but to be honest nothing really I mean with what we have now walls are really non-existent
yeah I mean
unless a queen's hitting them but I would say hmm very close to being maxed not maxed entirely but ex- some of the expos are maxed air defenses are maxed uh eagles maxed infernos are maxed
the giga tesla's maxed
e- every yeah giga tesla's maxed like it's just there's a few defenses like cannons and archer towers and wizard towers that aren't maxed actually no wait what's what's the max for town hall twelve for wizard towers
um dude you're asking you're asking me the wrong question uh it is
let me see let me see
I couldn't tell you man I couldn't tell you right off the bat
the max is eleven that sounds right let me let me go ahead and
Jamie asked how many Pekkas or bowbat it's five typically is what I've been seeing five Pekkas
five five to six
yeah five to six it really depends on the base and it how how much of the funnel you need to create and uh yeah
yes like it was the roughly the attack that was done on here from a tunnel twelve it wasn't super difficult because not all the wizard towers or the bomb towers or the cannons and archer towers were maxed and neither were the mortars no more close but it was still roughly a max space
right
because all the key defenses were maxed
right well
I haven't seen Pekka bowbat tunnel ten that's a strategy like it's it's not really something I see a lot at tunnel ten but at twelve yes
I've I've actually been seeing uh Pekka bowbat at tunnel ten as well man I mean um it's not like the the ti- I mean obviously it's a lot smaller composition so you have less troops obviously but yeah dude they're still using Pekka bowbat in the ice golem with their in the CC of course um
yeah ice golem in the CC is like really viable now
I think it's I think I think practically every every attack has to have one dude I mean like
let me see I know I had a video on um that strategy before let me just see if I can see if I can find it also I haven't seen the frozen bowler in a long time either that one was literally mass bowler with like five freeze spells
yeah with like six healers
um let me see when I let me I forget what the army composition of this was it was like a golem three witches eighteen where I was like hmm this is new
anyone try a Pekka witch combo Pekka witch combo I I you know I haven't actually seen a Pekka witch combo to be honest with you I mean it's either all witches or all Pekkas now I have seen like one Pekka with a few witches um but I mean is that really what you're talking about because I I see what you're saying and I think I think there is some value in it something
witch is not dead it is totally not dead
yeah that definitely not definitely not dead at all
yeah vi- virus it is definitely not dead I like in uh in um exit mortality's uh EWO world there was a queen walk bow witch it may not be used as frequently but bow witch is definitely not dead
yeah
that that buff to the to the witches makes spam bow witch and queen walk bow witch even more viable
well you know what else I've seen recently too is the ice golem uh bow witch have you seen that where they drop like five ice golems and then spam the witches and bowlers behind them and actually been pretty successful have you have you seen that attack uh cuz you remember do you remember whenever you had the giant bow witch spam it was like ten giants ten witches and fifteen bowlers let's kind of replace that with ice golems the giants
yeah
I don't know if you've seen
I I've I've seen mass witch with ice golems
yeah 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 with like two or three
pure mass witch and then ice golems like where there were like four ice golems those ice golems are insane
they really they really I I think they're gonna be I there's no way super self can can allow them to continue dude I think they're probably way too strong I don't know
nah do you know what surprisingly despite that they are used far less in actual army compositions which goes to show they don't need a nerf they don't they're if they're if a golem or a giant is being used more than they are what they which those two are
yeah
ice golems per- is perfect isn't a perfect spot it's a niche troop but it works cuz it's kind of acts as a as a as a one a mega freeze and two a free freeze spell
yeah I mean yeah and on top of that and it's a tank you know what I mean that helps out your troops
I I think you're gonna see it more in clan castles but I don't does it break anything no
no definitely
I think it's still a very very good trip to have in the game it's new and some I mean the mechanic of it is definitely something not so
alright we have a guy in the in the chat saying visit my base let's check out his base give him a little help here see if we can help him uh let me see V eights push it all in zero PU is that PU okay PU O alright guys so we have
okay okay so wait before you say that I wanna address Storm Storm if you haven't seen any of my other videos where I show queen charge lava loon that thing is strong right and I mean it's strong everywhere ten eleven twelve even tunnel nine where it was it where you get introduced to it
yeah well and and tunnel nine thrown in the electro dragon inside your CC is wicked dude that electro dragon will take down a base by itself at tunnel nine
yeah bas- basically you can't defend an electric
yeah you cannot defend
unless you unless you have it like where we're exactly gonna be placing it but then again you're not gonna know
exactly exactly um so here check it out man we have we have this dude's base up here and the question he is visit my base dude really do we really need to talk about this
okay hold on hold on let me okay uh eagle can be picked off
oh so you're talking about like you wanna break down the
I'm 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 breaking down the base you say it look good and I say it looks good too uh cuz you're you're in you're in a you're in legend so I that I can't I can't say anything about that I'm not trophy pusher but I mean the one thing that I see is that if someone comes in with like a wall wrecker or something that maybe not even a wall wrecker you break into the dark elixir compartment you can get that uh eagle really easily
it's it well this this one right here is a is is and like he said he sees trophy pushing as you can tell seeing the five fifty six hundred trophies which is a butt ton this guy enjoys clouds I can tell you that right now but um uh this is the type of base you're gonna see up there it's definitely a um a troll base where you know do you want the giga tesla or do you want the dark elixir or you know what I mean and so that's kind of what they have to decide on are they trophy pushing or they and so in my opinion this is a pretty solid base eagle in this in the center which is probably one of your biggest key defenses outside your giga tesla so I I agree with
Storm no one's getting used drag bat at at on this base for farming cuz people just farm here
yeah
and trophy push but yeah those are the more serious players
yeah so there you go man I think it looks pretty good dude keep it up
yeah I mean well it's obviously a troll ba- or troll base uh trophy base if you have like all the storages on the outside
definitely definitely we have another guy throwing in his tag let's check it out virus with a clan tag as well uh let's see G U Y Y I feel like this one's gonna be maybe a tunnel ten I know he said a tunnel nine right know what he said two eight two
yeah
oh wow this is this is a baby baby so death blader here with zero war stars let's check it out man what the heck dude
oh man he has ten he's ten he has ten trophies
that's so cute
he's get he's getting ready for the town hall five tur- that's what he's getting ready for
is this a tunnel five that's a top that's not even a five dude
it's a no it's not even a five but I'm saying he's getting ready
fair enough dude fair enough I like it man I like it it's cute I've I I just I wish I could attack it
they say it's a zero it there's ten trophies
that's funny dude and all he has is barbers barbs and archers goodness that's funny okay well we'll jump out of that I don't even wanna look at that man it just I I just I wish I can just drop my level sixty queen on it and just watch her work is that fair it's not fair is it
virus has a virus just put one up so go check that one out
virus just put another one up
why why I don't okay for I'm looking at your base too cuz it's right there man why do you have the eagle so exposed
it's the purpose is is that they'll jump in I all that loot right there thinking they can get to the giga tesla but because you see all the traps and shit there um it's it's a trophy base and it really does
yeah I know but like then again s- one troop sets all of that off
yes and no dude you should see it man we'll we'll play some replays after this after we check out
you know if I were to F see that as a town hall eleven I'd just go one loon and probably sue a hero
let's see let me let me uh we'll
a different direction
it actually helped me dude I pushed up the legend really quick with that base to be honest with you I had a lot of defense
I I usually I usually have my eagle straight in the middle like you s- I remember you saw my base even though my mine is in a uh town hall twelve like that base still does well it's just really compact so electro dragons uh even electro dragons on your base
oh yeah I mean dude no actually they don't do very well on that base to be honest with you they get destroyed before they get to town hall I'm I'm telling you it's 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 a really particular base and you know what does kill it is like a spam witch attack is a queen walk spam witch two eight two P two eight two P which happens to be the the current meta so dang it why did I get this wrong uh G O Y Y two eight two P what am I doing wrong guys I don't know it's not working dude
wait hold on wait which one are you doing
G O Y Y two eight two P what am I getting wrong
try putting try putting all that in a
I'm searching clan I was like dude uh what am I doing wrong here that's funny okay uh G O Y Y that's funny two eight two P alright so I actually memorized it now alright so check it out we're looking at a tunnel ten this time dude it's max it's a max tunnel ten practically okay close to it alive max heroes
let's take a look at this boy ju- just use crows I mean if you're gonna fu- just use crows that's a good base I use that all uh my tunnel ten journey
you placed a U instead of okay I got it the base does you are searching clan yeah shut up guys alright so
yeah tunnel ten I mean it's it's gonna be hard to be in champs cuz you probably see a lot of town hall elevens so I mean it's a good base
what what do you say you say the best place to either farm is probably crystal league for tunnel ten
I mean he well do you know what I would say crystal to masters I'm currently in crystals as a town eleven and that's good crystals is just good in general
yeah 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 I agree I agree with that
so I mean if you're if you I mean if you still have stuff to upgrade um for instance like cannons archer towers wizard ta- heroes um I totally just hang out in crystal until you get a max space feel free to stay at tunnel ten however long and then move up to uh
dude
town hall
only thing I'm gonna
pushing people to move to town eleven so
bro check it out he has a level twenty three barbarian king
yeah I mean everyone does their king last like for me I'm I have a level forty seven king and a fi- level fifty queen so
yeah well I mean I'm saying I'm saying clearly this guy went to tunnel ten before he maxes uh his king out you know which I mean it is what it is obviously we know at tunnel nine it sucks because you max out your entire base before you even get your heroes halfway up there and so you're just sitting on all this loot and so I get the uh but man it does it does hurt it does hurt in wars cuz I I tell people man and this is kind of my thing is you're only as strong as your heroes are right you know so alright we have one more base let's check it out let's just see what this guy's got on ground here alright so the next base is gonna be eight U L eight eight U L eight U L eight eight zero alright last two let's see what we got here it is a town hall nine at a tunnel line in Mexican nation alright alright
oh to- well it's a tunnel nine
yeah tunnel nine it's cute
okay
go ahead corrupt
work on heroes
work on heroes yes
don't don't go please don't uh you see your queen's fine your king is okay
I would say okay so if I'm judging this base
something I'm surprised on is low heroes but level three expo
right
also don't have the don't have those expos on just ground it works on it it's a very very niche uh sort of mode don't don't do that just just put it on air and ground
yeah always always
uh then other than that I think he's just being on the defenses I would say most of those defenses are actually you know all those defenses were maxed for tunnel eight so he's okay there I think just work on walls before you go up to uh town hall ten uh and just completely completely max the base out it took me a year to get through tunnel nine I don't think it's gonna take that long nowadays
yeah especially with the gold pass
well cuz I mean I I uh when I was a tunnel nine I still had to grind I grinded that hero that queen from level uh one to all the way to level thirty that took me like almost a year and a couple
definitely 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 I think tunnel nine is probably and I I it's weird it's weird to say it I mean especially why tunnel nine but it is most definitely the longest uh base to get through and I think it's because you have to bring a uh uh hero up to thirty levels and then you have to bring your king up freaking twenty level that's a lot man that's fifty levels for just you know your heroes alone but yes I would agree with corrupt on this one man I think you need to pause all your defensive upgrades focus on your walls focus on your hero upgrades
I would say just do your walls whenever
yeah
maybe at at least keep a builder up
I would say man
wait look at wait look at his troops I wanna see those
I wanna look at his troops
I think they should I think they should all be
wow not even close not even close
they should all be tunnel A at least
his go- his golems
no actually no I'm wrong
witches
well remember you get the those are well golems he should have up you should upgrade valkas you should upgrade hogs you should upgrade
exactly
minions if you're gonna use lava loon then I would suggest doing that but other than the witches and the hounds don't worry about those you can upgrade the hounds though and maybe witches if you want to for witch slap but
definitely definitely
we'll just use witch slap if you're gonna if you're in war just use witch slap just level up your healers level up your witches level heals your rage your poison and that's it and probably
you you can
you can't upgrade jump
you could tell he's he's focusing on his dragons seems to be seems to be his probably uh attack of
if 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 he wants to use dragons he can do that just upgrade the lightning and the uh quake and boom zap quake
that's what it looks like yeah that's what it looks like he's doing right there
see I tell I tell you dragons are now meta from level seven to town hall twelve
yeah they're re- they're ridiculous man they are they are indeed uh really strong down there look at
you never thought a long dead troop would actually
I know it's been uh it has been
funny though is that there was an attack uh from one of uh our clan mates that um used sixteen barbarians
wow sixteen what do to do what
uh let's see let me see the attack um
Yasmin says it is
it was a hot it was a kill squad hog attack with sixteen uh barbarians it was a ten V ten attack
I'm I'm showing I'm gonna show you some replays of this base dude my last two um hits have been defense so like if that tells you anything yes this is a tunnel eleven but I mean you could tell he's just going in for loot and it's good for me because I'm actually trying to get to legends again so
I got another base from uh virus
we got another base for virus okay we'll check that one out after this but you could see like everything just gets wrecked there man in the center right before even making their way cuz then they have to get through three um infernal towers and so you could see like he's he's kind of freaking out noticing not only do I have CC troops but he's not gonna be able to get through those walls to my giga tesla
yeah but then again probably a competent queen walk minor attack could actually do the trick
definitely but remember that front that front inferno is set to single so it's something you'll have to deal with too um along with
you don't even have to come from that direct
exactly and that's what that's what everybody doesn't do but see they also realize all the loot's down there so like if I don't go all the way through
if you just if you use a minor attack on the space you can get to the loot at the last portion of the attack
well the cool thing is there's a minor attack actually that just took place on it so we'll watch it
oh was it hmm
it was a
I can do my spam lalo on it
right like check it out so here this guy's using it appears to be some type of queen walk minor attack obviously he's a tunnel eleven so um you know it is gonna be hard to get anywhere with a tunnel eleven but still doable
I would say though like just kind of looking at it I think the easiest funnel that you can make is probably
coming from the north dude the nor- the the top of the base
yeah or I can just use a drag bat
yeah right exactly stick with what we know works
that way that way the whole bottom section
exactly that's what I Exactly, that's what I, that's what I would do.
Yeah, go check out that video. It's a good video. It's a good spam lalo video of my favorite farming army next to march.
Jamie says, love that base, dude. I love this base too, I really do. Um, it came, it came from one of my boys, uh, Beazer. And uh, he actually recently just left clan, but he, I mean, he knew what he was doing, dude. The guy got sixty-one hundred trophies. In in one season, ridiculous. The guy would spend three uh, three to four hours uh, searching for one base. He would talk about it, dude. He would sit there and be like thirty minutes, an hour, two hours, and I was like, dude, what the heck? In clouds, dude. Crazy. I can't imagine doing that, to be honest. Alright, so let's check out virus's base. I'm gonna, I'll speed this one up. You guys can watch it all happen. Queen lock just went down. Minor is coming in.
Yeah, Storm, I do, I do have a silly lalo video. I actually, let's see, the last time I did a silly lalo video was. It's two weeks ago, so if you check, uh, go to my video section, you'll find that video out. It's a good video. I love silly lalo.
If you guys wanna check out his, his uh YouTube channel, check it out. It's in the uh, description of this video, so. Go over there and find it, find the video you guys are looking for. Alright, so let's check out this other base that was given to us and see what it looks like. Oh, virus in problem with another town hall one. Nine eight. So corrupt, how old are you?
I am seventeen, my dude.
You're seventeen and how long have you been playing Clash of Clans?
For like. Four years, not like, three years right now, but I think four years coming up. I've been playing since twenty fifteen.
And how long have you been um, YouTubing?
For about, since twenty seventeen, late twenty seventeen.
Since twenty seventeen, okay, so late twenty seventeen, so you've been doing it for um, just about, almost, okay, so about a year and a half, give or take?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what's up.
Almost two years.
That's awesome, man.
I'm still waiting, I'm still being patient, so I can get that community tab.
Right, right, it it'll happen, dude. It took me one week from the the day I I reached it.
Yeah, I forgot when I reached one K. I'm kinda just, I'm just being patient at this point.
You're just being, dude, I know, when I didn't even know I was gonna get it, honestly, I had no clue. And then when they, when I got the notification, I was like, what the heck does this mean? And I looked it up, I'm like, whoa, that's kind of cool, man. I mean, I didn't. I I really haven't done a lot of re- I'm I'm kind of new to the game, man. I've only been doing uh, YouTube for about, what, seven months, eight months? And so, I mean, I I haven't dove in like, like that. Did you know you were, you were gonna get it at a thousand? I hooked you up with a shout out. No, I gave you, gave you like a butt ton, even though I don't get a lot of views. Um, but you know, every, every sub counts, man. Every, you guys are just awesome. Every single one of you guys who are watching, it's just, that's, that's what we do it for. I know corrupt will say the same thing. Yeah, or it sounds so motivated. Alright, so check it out. We have the ne- of the other base in front of us and uh, this looks like a war base, actually.
Uh, yeah, it kind of does.
You know, it kind of looks like.
Once, I don't like that one single target. Change that from single to multi.
Definitely get it to multi and that that Giga Tesla is snappable outside of walls.
Uh, yeah, the Giga Tesla is walkable.
It's walkable, so um, that's definitely something you wanna wanna fix, man. Uh, walkable.
If if you're using, if you're using that for, I would say, don't have the, don't have the channel that goes literally through the base. If someone like does a really good like pathing through it, then you can get the Giga Tesla really easily, the. See, the queen, despite you know the queen maybe being a different place if this is a war base, but yeah, I would definitely say that.
Agreed.
With those. Just why, I think one of the biggest tips like for for base building at town hall twelve is just, don't make the Giga Tesla. Uh, walkable.
Yeah.
I've seen it where if if it's a walkable uh, town hall, then. A, even a mass minion strategy can destroy that. But yeah, there has to be, you know, there has to be more. Single target inferno.
Yep, yep, yep.
I don't see a lot of mass minion anymore, but.
I know.
But it was fun when it happened.
It was amazing to watch, I'm not gonna lie. It was really fun to watch. I I've I've actually never seen anything like that, like minions? Like who thinks minions can do anything? Well, they freaking messed up bases.
Yeah. Especially a hundred and five.
Yeah.
Geez.
Yeah, that's insane. That's insane. Anyway, guys, I don't know, I don't know, corrupt, do you have anything else to say, man?
Um, not really from what I can say. I mean, it's been a short, but I mean, eh, who?
Definitely, definitely. I, well, I really appreciate everybody watching. If you guys have any more questions, definitely hit us up on our servers. If you guys are not on uh, Discord. Um, you guys can uh, you know, definitely jump into one of our Discord servers and we'll get you hooked up with each other. Um, I'm sure we're gonna be having more uh, town hall meetings very shortly. I really like this platform and corrupt is us, obviously. A really uh, knowledgeable Clash of Clan uh, planner to be doing this with, man. I really appreciate you coming on, corrupt.
Yeah. And uh, for those, uh, most likely, the video. I'm gonna be editing it. Or, um, that video on the Pekka Boba video for fixing fails. Um, is gonna come out probably at two fifteen. Uh, I, if I can get that done, probably two fifteen, if not, two thirty to three. We'll see, but between that time frame.
So, go check out corrupt's channel, guys. It's located in the description below. Definitely head over there. Um, great peoples all the way around. Again, corrupt, thank you so much for coming on. Do you have anything else to say before we bounce out?
Nope. Not really for me.
Perfect. Alright, guys, thank you guys so much. Um, as usual, I hope you all have a fantastic weekend and roar is out and most definitely stay classy.